Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining the webinar. So this is a listen-only webinar. Please make sure your web cameras turned off and your microphone is muted. My name is Bev Ludkamire. I'm the Director for Special Education Compliance. So this webinar is going to cover the proposed changes to the Part B State Plan for Special Education. This webinar is being recorded. The recording and the slides and other documents from today's webinar will be posted as soon as possible. To find the recording, visit the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or DESI website. And click on the Recorded Webinars button. This webinar is provided to you with closed captioning. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow stakeholders to hear about the proposed changes and ask any clarifying questions in the chat window. Responses to the questions will be posted on the DESI webinar page along with the webinar. So comments on the proposed changes to the Missouri State Plan for Special Education can be made from November 19, 2021 through December 20, 2021, and may be emailed to idea comments@desi mo.gov. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Special Education, is the administrative agency responsible for ensuring the implementation of Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. The Missouri Part B program serves children and youth with disabilities from age 3 to 21. IDEA requires that DESI have policies and/or procedures to ensure that IDEA is implemented and the rights of children and youth with disabilities are protected. IDEA also requires that DESI pull public hearings and provide opportunity for the general public to comment before adopting any new policy or procedure. Today's webinar will serve as DESI's second public hearing related to proposed changes to the state regulations for Part B of the IDEA. Reminder, we will not be taking public comments during the hearings. Any comments must be submitted in writing to the Office of Special Education by close of business at 4:30 PM on December 20, 2021. So the purpose of this meeting is to fulfill the public hearing requirements of Part B of the IDEA and give stakeholders an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions on the proposed changes to the Missouri State Plan for Special Education for Part B. Please submit your questions during the hearing in the chat. Responses to the questions will be posted on the webinar page given on the previous slide. You'll find the recorded webinar from November 29. There, there was only one question and the response to that question is posted. The following is an explanation of the hearing and changes process. Two public hearings via webinar held. The first was Monday, November 29, 2021, and the second is this one today, Monday, December 13, 2021. We are taking written comments on the proposed changes until the close of business on December 20, 2021. Following the deadline for receiving comments, the DESI will review all comments submitted and make one of three decisions about the proposed changes. We'll either make the change as proposed, make the change with revisions, or not make the change. All comments received will be summarized and published on the DESI's webpage. The proposed changes will go to the State Board of Education. After the State Board of Education takes action on the proposed changes, they will be submitted to the Secretary of State's office for publication in the Missouri Register. The changes will become final after they have been published in the Missouri Register the required number of days. Comments may be submitted by mail to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Special Education, Attention Part B State Plan Comments, PO Box 480, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65102-0480, or by email to idea comments@desi mo.gov. Attention Part B State Plan Comments, or by fax to 573-751-3910, Attention Part B State Plan Comments. Today's webinar will proceed as follows. I'll read a summary of the proposed substantive changes. The summary will follow what is posted on the State Plan webpage available at https://desi mo.gov/special-education-state-plan-special-education. I will pause periodically to read any questions that are received during the webinar. You may use the chat feature to ask your questions. Answers to your questions will be posted following the webinar. You may ask questions on any proposed regulation at any time during the webinar by using the chat feature. We will keep the Zoom open as long as we are receiving questions or until 11:30 AM. If we are finished presenting the proposed changes and are receiving no questions, we will end the webinar. We will now begin the public hearing for the proposed changes to the Missouri Part B State Plan. So the first section with proposed changes is Regulation 3: Identification and Evaluation. The first proposed change is on page 21. It reads as follows. Well, it does read as follows. The change is to change the word "human services" to "senior services" in the name listed for the Department of Health. And this is to update the current name for the state agency, which is Department of Health and Senior Services. The next proposed change is also in Regulation 3. It can be found on page 27. There, the change is to add two additional titles to the list of qualified personnel who can evaluate and identify a health impairment. It would read, "A student displays a health impairment when a health impairment has been diagnosed by a licensed physician, licensed assistant physician, Missouri State Board of Nursing Recognized Advanced Practice Registered Nurse, licensed psychologist, licensed professional counselor, licensed clinical social worker, or school psychologist." The reason for the proposed change is because physician assistants and advanced practice registered nurses are authorized to evaluate and treat patients, including prescribing medications under the direct supervision of a licensed medical doctor. Accepting diagnostic reports from physician assistants and advanced practice registered nurses is easier for patient will make it easier for parents and school staff to get access to medical personnel qualified to evaluate children. The next proposed change is also in Regulation 3, found on page 42. Currently, the section describing a timeline requirement for determining eligibility using the criteria for specific learning disability is written in one paragraph. The proposed change integrates formatting used in the IDEA and adds a reference to the specific learning disabilities eligibility criteria located in a preceding section of the state plan. So the proposed change will read as follows. "The public agency must promptly request parental consent to evaluate the student to determine if the student needs special education and related services, and must adhere to the evaluation timelines unless extended by mutual written agreement of the student's parent and the evaluation professionals." One, if prior to a referral, a student has not made adequate progress after an appropriate period of time when provided instruction, as described in the preceding section for specific learning disabilities for A and B, and two, whenever a student is referred for an evaluation. So as I mentioned earlier, this, the proposed, the reason for this proposed change is to more closely reflect the formatting in the federal regulation statute listed here, which is 34 CFR 30309C1 and 34 CFR 30309C2. That was the last proposed change in Regulation 3. The next proposed change is in Regulation 4, which covers FAP, IEP, and least restrictive environment. The proposed change is on page 50. This proposed change is to correct a formatting error. Would read as follows. Five, an individual who can interpret the instructional implications of evaluation results who may be a member of the team described in strike through B2 through strike through D4 of this paragraph. The reason for the proposed change is there's no B through D of the referenced paragraph. But the paragraph does include 2 through 4, which describes professional staff members from the LEA who would serve on IEP teams. One of those people can fill the role of an individual who can interpret instructional implications of evaluation results if they meet the requirements. The next proposed change in Regulation 4 is on page 52. It reads as follows. "Other measures to ensure parent participation. If neither parent can attend, the public agency shall use other methods to ensure parent participation, including conference telephone calls or video conferences, consistent with 34 CFR 300.328." The reason for the proposed change is to add video conferencing to make it consistent with the federal regulation at 34 CFR 30328 under alternative means of meeting participation. The next proposed change in Regulation 4 is on page 54 in the in-state transfer section. It reads as follows. "If the public agency does not agree with the current evaluation report, it must initiate a reevaluation as described in this state plan. During the time that the reevaluation is being conducted, the agency shall implement the IP as written from the sending agency or provide comparable services until the reevaluation is complete." So the reason for the proposed change is to make it consistent with the federal regulation at 34 CFR 30323, "Transfer within the same state", which, which does not include that a requirement to develop an interim IEP. That was the last proposed change in Regulation 4. The next proposed changes are in Regulation 5: Procedural Safeguards and Discipline. On page 66, we're proposing to add the following sentence to the section describing parental consent for reevaluations. "Informed parental consent need not be obtained if the public agency can demonstrate it made reasonable efforts to obtain such consent, and the child's parent failed to respond." The reason for this proposed change is to add this sentence describing an exception to the consent requirement because it's included in the federal regulation at 34 CFR 300.300C to make this section in the state plan consistent with IDEA regulations. That was the only proposed change in Regulation 5. The next proposed change is in Regulation 8: Personnel Standards. It's found on page 105. And it would remove the title, "Responsibilities, Educational Qualifications, and Certificates or License requirements for Speech Implementer." The reason for the proposed change is because LEAs will no longer be allowed to use the speech implementer model, beginning with the 2022-23 school year. And generally, any change in the state plan goes into effect late in June or early in July. So this would be in place for the 2022-23 school year if it's approved. The next proposed change is also in Regulation 8 and found on page 106. The proposed change is to change the title for Teacher Specialized Instruction to Teacher Specially Designed Instruction. The reason for the proposed change is to change that term to more closely match wording used in IDEA in the following regulation found at 34 CFR 300.39A1. That's the last proposed change in Regulation 8. The next proposed change is in Regulation 16: State Board Operated Programs. The first proposed change is found on pages 150 through 151. There's a series of formatting changes due to adding some section headers that help separate out the different parts in the process for evaluation and, and referral, or for eligibility rather, and referral for MSSD, Missouri School for Severely Disabled. So we would add section headers to clarify the process for eligibility and referral and renumber sections accordingly. New section headers are MSSD Eligibility Review and MSSD Referral Procedure. So again, the reason for the proposed change is to more clearly identify the components of the eligibility and referral process. So sections were renumbered to just for addition of the headers. So this slide reflects some renumbering of the previously mentioned formatting change. And it also reflects a proposed change in some, some of the wording used. So it's found on page 151. It reads as follow. Three, at any time, the IEP team may determine, based on general functioning level, an IEP goal progress show, strike through show, that the student is no longer eligible for MSSD because MSSD can no longer provide FAP in the least restrictive environment. So the proposed change is to revise this section to make it clear that local public agencies are responsible for determining placement in the least restrictive environment, including when MSSD is no longer the appropriate placement. So the next proposed change is to strike through, remove some information found on page 151. We will remove the following. "The student's cognitive and adaptive levels of functioning or performance at school no longer demonstrate a need for pervasive levels of supports across all life areas, and a separate school placement no longer appears to be the student's least restrictive environment, or be a separate school placement is no longer the student's least restrictive environment because he or she demonstrates a need for homebound instruction that exceeds the scope of what would reasonably be considered intermittent in nature." These are being removed because IEP teams should apply the process for determining least restrictive environment. These two examples are not the only two possible reasons for changing the least restrictive environment. So this is really a continuation of the change on 151, page 151. Yes. It reads as follows. "In such instances, the public agency representative convenes the IEP team, including a representative of MSSD, to review, revise the IEP to determine placement in the least restrictive environment. The team should consider IEP goal progress data, other existing data in the education record, information from the most recent reevaluation, and any relevant medical information. The public agency will provide the parent with prior written notice of the change in placement and change in services. The reason for this proposed change is because when MSSD is no longer the appropriate placement, the public agency convenes the IEP team to change the placement in the least restrictive environment, removing reference to transfer student process because the local public agency was responsible for determining placement when the student attended MSSD and continues to be responsible when placement in the least restrictive environment changes." Please ask any clarifying questions in the chat. Questions will be read aloud during webinar and responses provided writing will be posted on the webinar page. Just want to remind you once again, we will not be taking public comments during the hearings. Any comments should be submitted in writing to the Office of Special Education no later than the end of the business day on December 20 of 2021. Dana, are there any questions in the chat?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. So the time is 10:57. If we don't have any questions by five minutes after 11, we'll go ahead and end this webinar. It's 10:59. If I don't have any new questions in the chat by 11:05, we're going to end the webinar and the recording. 11:05, we're going to end the webinar and the recording. It's 11:04, I mean 11:01. We'll keep this webinar open for four more minutes. It's 11:03. We'll keep this webinar open for two more minutes. We haven't had any questions in the chat. It's 11:04. We'll keep this webinar open for one more minute. We haven't had any questions entered in the chat.